The regular meeting of the Paramount City Council September 19th meeting is called to order. Can we have roll call of council members, please?
Councilmember Hanson.
Here.
Councilmember Hoffmeyer.
Here.
Councilmember Gillan.
Vice Mayor Martinez.
Here.
Mayor Levens.
Here.
And next we have public comments.
Yes, Madam Mayor, we have speaker cards. The first one is from Holly Enriquez. She wants to speak on agenda item number three. So Mrs. Enriquez will call you up when that item's heard. The next one we have is from Mr. Reno Randula, and he has general comments. Relax, please. Mr. Randula? Thank you.
First of all, it's my honor to commend the job of the Phillips deputist. Well done in this city, and so does your integrity and professionalism toward your service for the residents of Paramount and the protection of all, including non-residents. Secondly, if it's me, the city council and staff before the meeting must provide to the public in written by papers the definitions of the propositions, the agendas, or subject matters that ought to be acted and discussed during the meeting to accommodate also especially the elderly, most especially don't have the skills to read a true internet. And lastly, my question for you city council, based on proper scientific evidence by inside and outside expert monitoring, how could it happen that the very non-politicians and residents were able to close down their greatest polluter, the Excite Battery Plant, legally for the sake of which health city of the residents and its protection? And how come Paramount leaders until now cannot get rid of this deadly toxic hexavalent chromium from these polluters? Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Another speaker?
Yes, ma'am. The next speaker's card is from Mrs. Cindy Nelson. She'd like to discuss handicap parking at IHOP. Ms. Nelson?
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Levens, Councilmember Gillan, and the rest of the council members. This morning, I took my dad to the new IHOP on Paramount Boulevard. The food and the service were very good. We needed to sit down restaurant like this, and it's a great addition to our city. So thank you for helping to bring that to the city. My dad is 82 and disabled and walks with a walker, and on his bad days, he uses a wheelchair. I also have other family members who are disabled and require wheelchairs. We were very disappointed to realize today that the new IHOP has no handicap parking spaces, not even one in front of IHOP. I did notice there was one on the next building over, but not directly in front of the IHOP. According to the city, the IHOP parking lot has 316 parking spaces and additional 50 in the back. The Americans Disabilities Act of 2010 requires businesses with public parking to provide handicap parking spaces. A business with 301 to 400 spaces are required to have eight handicap parking spaces. The parking spots must be eight foot wide and at least one spot that must be van accessible. I have a photo showing that there are no handicap spots anywhere near the front door. If I can suggest that all the parking spots in front of the IHOP be converted into handicap parking spaces, as they are currently too narrow to fit a regular-sized car. I also have a picture of how the cars park in every other parking spot because of the small size of the parking spaces, and they overlap on two spots. In addition, if the cars were to park in every spot, you cannot open the door of your car, so you can't even get out. And I have photos. So this is what happened today. My disabled father could not enter or exit my vehicle. I had to pull out in the middle of the parking lot, blocking traffic, and exit my vehicle to help my father in my car. Very unsafe. I have a photo of this as well. I hope this issue can be fixed, since everyone should be able to enjoy a nice dining experience with their friends and families, including those disabled. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I have.
And if I could just ask, I know I spoke to you along this line, Chris, the other day, and you mentioned to me that I think it was you and Bill Pageant are doing a study on that parking lot now?
No, we're just looking at some issues with two-way traffic. Any of the other issues in regards to that would actually be a community development thing.
Oh, okay.
Because it's a private parking lot.
I'm sorry. And Madam Mayor, we are in contact with the property owner to make sure that, because there is, as Chris said, some traffic issues with, right in front of IHOP, with the directional. Once we get them to restripe it, there's a very good chance that they will have to provide handicap parking. In addition to that, our building and safety department has been notified of the lack of parking. They are going to be reviewing the code in regards to that to provide to make sure that it is per code.
Okay, so we can handle all of those issues at once during the review? Perfect, thank you. Next speaker?
We contacted the property owner, the management company, today, so we're just hoping that they will respond as quickly as possible. So, thank you. And here are the attachments. All righty. Our next speaker's card is from Mr. Jeremy Christian, who'd like to discuss Weber Metals. Mr. Christian?
My name's Jeremy Christian. I actually didn't write anything or plan anything out, but I just want to talk a little bit about Weber Metals and, you know, what it means to me as a citizen of Paramount and as a worker of this pretty good company, in my opinion. The fact of the matter is, is that this company's been around for a lot longer than these tests have been going on, and it just now seems to be brought up that the hexavalent chromium levels are too high in this city and things like that. And, I mean, I feel that our company could work easily with the city council members and the citizens of this city into trying to prevent things like that from, you know, jumping up and maybe figuring out the source and trying to prevent, you know, any health problems within this city. And I feel that we have a good engineering team and a good environmental policies within our facilities. I am just, I work on the shop floor myself. I am not an engineer, I'm not in management or anything like that, but I feel that they do go above and beyond to make sure that we have a safe environment and that they're constantly improving on every aspect of it, whether it be air quality or any type of tooling problems that we have or anything like that. And I just kind of want to speak out in defense of, in defense of our company and say that they do do a lot and that they provide a lot for this city and they do go above and beyond for the employees to make sure that we have a healthy workplace. It is an industrial plant, and industry isn't the safest and cleanest place, but that's something that we somewhat have to work through and try to improve as workers and for management. And it's something I feel that the residents of the city should also help us work through as well and give us a chance to, you know, work through that, because we have the resources to, you know, help you guys out as well. I mean, they make a lot of money, and of course, they're going to try to comply to any, any city regulations that go on or any state regulations, and they care a lot about their workforce and they do a lot for us, whether it be health fairs or, you know, they sponsor a lot of runs and things like that. And it's just, it's a shame to hear that a lot of people don't like us because of the work we do, and they feel that we might, because we're involved in this type of work, we might, you know, not be the best type of people, but I feel that's a little wrong and a little bit of a, I just feel it's a little wrong, you know, because it's a good company, and I've, I've worked here for five years and I've been a resident of Paramount for five years only. And I know that's not a long time, but ever since I've lived in this city, I have worked at this company, and I would never want to leave this company, because it is such a great company to its people and really good people. So that's just all I want to say.
Thank you, sir.
Next speaker?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Our next speaker, our next speaker is Mr. Pablo Viola. Mr. Viola?
My name is Pablo Viola, and I'm here as a concerned resident of Paramount as well as an employee of Weber Metals. As most of us know, there has been a great deal of chaos regarding, regarding the air quality of our city. I attended the Paramount School system since age eight and have siblings that attend Lincoln Elementary and Paramount High School, which are in close vicinity of forging companies such as Carlton Forge. Therefore, I am extremely dissatisfied in the air quality of our city. It is unacceptable to permit manufacturing companies to continue to pollute our, pollute our air. A lot of this fault has been attributed to the manufacturing companies in Paramount and more specifically directed towards Carlton Forge and Weber Metals. However, I can speak from firsthand experience that Weber Metals is a champion of environmental policies and employee safety and is truly the greenest, is truly the greenest factory in Paramount. The AQMD was actually, was actually in our facility performing an audit a few days ago, and I'm pretty sure that that came out well. There has also been a lot of improvements made to better minimize the possible pollution that our company may, may contribute to in our grinding operations. However, we do not manufacture material containing hexavalent chromium, which is a main concern of the AQMD and is the most prevailing carcinogen. I can truly say that I feel completely safe working for Weber Metals and living in Paramount with Weber Metals operating. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Our next, our next speaker card is from Ms. Velma Cora Starlings. She wants, has a general comments she'd like to wish.
Good evening, Mayor Levens, Vice Mayor Diane Martinez. I'm a little nervous, but I feel I need to say this. Councilmember Dr. Hanson, Ms. Gillan, and Mr. Hoffmeyer. My name is Velma Cora Starlings, and I live at 15542 Orozaba Avenue, here in the city. I'm here to speak in behalf of my family. Everyone's saying this and that about Paramount. I've been approached by my brothers, I've been approached by family and friends. Why do you still live in the city of Paramount? I live in the city of Paramount, because this is where my family raised me. This is where my mom and my dad brought me. My husband and I, and even my two son-in-laws are Paramount graduates. My husband worked at aircraft engineer for several years, and there was no issues, no problems, and he was able to provide for us. I have worked for PUSD for almost 30 years, and I retired, and I'm very happy. My granddaughter's attending Lincoln School, and I am very proud of the principals, the teachers, the staff, the faculty that provide an education for my granddaughters. My daughter's attended Arley the Rosary and graduated from Arley Rosary, but attended a high school at St. Joseph's. I've always loved the city of Paramount. I have never even had a thought of living anywhere else. I have never had any problems, I've never had any issues. I love the city of Paramount. My dad loved the city of Paramount. My mom and dad, I'm not embarrassed to say. My parents worked at the swap meet, sold at the swap meet. My dad worked at the steel company that was on Garfield Avenue, and to provide for his family, they worked at the swap meet on part-time basis, but provided for their family. Last week, Ms. Gillan, I mean, last city meeting, Ms. Gillan mentioned that we are a democracy city. Yes, we are. We're all entitled to our opinions, we're all entitled to our concerns. I believe in all of you, that this situation, that everyone is concerned and uproar. It's very disappointing to me that we don't work together as a team. I've been raised and taught that I have to have faith and believe in our city and believe in our Lord. I leave the situation in your hands, because I believe in you, I care about you, I care about our city. I, one last thing that I do want to mention. Last city council meeting, I was appalled, I was disappointed. As I was leaving to get in my car and our guests and our residents, there were a few residents on top of city hall steps, causing a commotion. I felt embarrassed. I was disappointed. These are friends, residents, that I've known all my life practically. I was very disappointed. Actually, I went home and told my family how disappointed I was. That I have faith and I believe and I support all of you. Peggy Levens, I support you. I believe in you. I believe that you are going to do well for our city. I believe that Mr. Hoffmeyer is, and Diane Martinez, and I believe that Dr. Hanson, and you, Ms. Gillan. I believe that you have, you have the ability, and you got elected to help us, and I thank you. I thank God for the city of Paramount. I thank God for the United States of America. God bless all of you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson.
Our next speaker, Madam Mayor, is David, Mr. David Eichler? Eichler? Eichler, sorry, sir. Eichler.
Oh, yeah, you all remember that. Can you hear me? Good afternoon. I am a citizen of Paramount. I live at 16647 Lake, two blocks that way. All right, I've been here 25 years. I remember Jackson going through to Cherry, I remember going back this way. This is a beautiful spot over here, and you really did a good job decorating up and fixing up our city. Thank you for increasing my property values. I know you did that. I also work for Weber Metals. I'm not here to say what a great company it is. It is. We all, you've heard it 100 times. I'm saying the company is trying to do something to prevent anybody from becoming ill, all right? I work maintenance. I work on those machines. All three shifts, if they, if they have a problem, they come to me and I fix it. So I know what the machines are doing, all right? And I know what Weber Metals is doing and what they're not doing, all right? They are washing water brass in the roofs and water brass in all the streets. AQMD is requiring them to do that. The water's not going to the ocean, they're collecting it and putting in totes and hauling away its hazardous waste. We've got to do that. They've gone and put blue tarps over all the grinding areas with doors that close in eight seconds unless something's in its way. I fix those doors. The people are in there grinding every day in these enclosed areas. Our people are suffering, so we don't get killed out here. I'm 68 years old. I'm not going to let anything happen to me and my family. I live two blocks downwind of Weber Metals. I'm going to watch these people, and they know that. I'm on their team, but they know I'm going to find out what's going on. If there's any problems, I'll be the first one to tell you what's going on. God bless America.
Our next speaker card, Madam Mayor, is from Mr. Alberto McLean. He wants to discuss ads left at residence. Mr. McLean?
Good evening, Mayor, council members. I'm a concern with the city. A lot of times I come home from work and I have these ads on my door from Papa Joe's, different vendors and stuff like that. I think it's a bad idea to have these vendors, you know, just go around. I had an experience where I was at sitting in my living room, and I heard like the door kind of moved, and I was, I don't know if the guy was trying to open it or not. I hear a lot of this knock-knock, you know, break hamburgers and stuff like that. That is just a beacon to let other people know that nobody's home at that house. Sometimes there's people that drop off newspapers, newspaper ads. They throw them in my driveway. I don't think they would appreciate it if I go throw my trash in their driveway. I mean, we should look into getting some, you know, a law passed so this guy's stuff's not going around, just to prevent, else they're breaking into somebody's house. And that's it. You guys are doing a great job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any staff member that can answer whether or not there's an ordinance at this time?
Madam Mayor, what I can tell you is that such an ordinance probably is very difficult to adopt, because there are First Amendment issues with respect to leaflets and advertising. The only thing that homeowners can do is make a post, no solicitation, no loitering of materials. That way, they, they're able to act on their own behalf, but for the city to make a blanket prohibition, that, that would create some legal problems.
Thank you, sir. Is there another speaker?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Our next speaker is Mr. Gerald Serta, and Mr. Serta, I believe you want to speak about P-A-M-C.
Good afternoon, Mayor, council members. It's actually parked, I wrote it kind of, kind of fast. I just want to bring, the, there is a lot of improvements, a lot of companies are making improvements. We still have an issue that everybody's trying to resolve. My concern, or my request was that we can, I know I mentioned it to Public Works, if we can trim the trees just a little bit when it's the next cycle, so we can try to get some of this air cleaned, more vegetation. This way, it can filter out some of the toxins that are in our air. And then the other thing was with the parks, I know two big trees were cut at the Progress Park and three little trees were planted, so that's a step in the right direction. But with Progress Park or any park in the city, I was wondering if we can have a dog park in our city? Yes, we don't have a dog, a dog park in our city. We would have to go eat a bellflower or where our money, taxpayers' money was invested, which is Southgate, correct? And I'm not too sure the $43,650 or the $15,000 was invested, but can we invest that in one of our parks here in the city to make a dog park for our veterans that may need service dogs or emotional dogs?
We can certainly take your comments under advisement, sir, and then it's something that staff will report back to us on.
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes, Madam Mayor, our last speaker's card is from Ms. Lisa Lappin, but she would like to discuss rules of decorum. Ms. Lappin, is that, that's item number three?
More so that of the address that I wrote.
Okay. Madam Mayor, it sounds like there's two items she'd like to discuss. Would you like to take it now or at item three?
Yeah, so she's coming up on item three?
Yes.
Okay, and we'll just do both at once.
Okay. So it'll be at item three. I just got another one from Ms. Ramona Fujimono, violations and county health directive.
Hello, good evening. Based on recent evaluations of hexavalent chromium documented by the AQMD extensive monitoring network, public health has determined action is needed without delay to protect the health of the Paramount community. This was from Dr. Jeffrey Gunsenhauser, the county's interim health official, officers. The Health Department issued public health directives last Friday, and this was in August, so about a month ago, to four facilities, Carlton Forge, Press Forge, Weber Metals, and Matco. The directives say AQMD monitoring data show the facilities emitted elevated levels of hexavalent chromium last month, and they must work with the air district to correct the problem, which may include partial or full suspension of operations. I think a lot of people's comments have been directed to myself, and I will say myself, and I just want to let everybody's give me an history about where they came from. I came from Paramount as well. I was born at Charter Suburban, I went to Our Lady of the Rosary, I went to high school in Downey. So when people come and attack us that we don't love our city, I don't know where our concern comes from that we don't love our city. I don't need to say anything else but that I went to Catholic school, so I understand people keep bringing God into the picture, and I do too, and I pray on it. And what I've come is I was educated by a handful of nuns, and they would tell us every day, you must do what is not the popular thing, but what is the best thing for people. And it may not be the right, it may not be the most popular thing, and people may not like you, but like Jesus Christ, he did something that nobody else wanted to do. So it goes both ways. I'm not angry at people coming up. I'm actually happy that people are actually talking and saying their concerns. It's, it is a good thing. And we also want to move forward, and all we're asking, we're not, I mean, the community is not going to shut down these companies, but the best available emission controls, is that, is that too hard to ask from any company? I don't think so. And when I'm driving down Adams during the week and there's a crane that looks like it belongs in downtown LA by Carlton Forge with the roof open, lowering a machine, we do lose all trust. We worry, we shouldn't be worrying about these things, but we do. I mean, it's our health, it's our property, it's, it's our livelihood too. So, you know, we are going to keep pushing, we're not going to stay silent, we're going to hold everybody accountable, these companies, the city council, the city staff, because that's what we do in America. We all love America, and that's our job. Thank you.
Thank you. No more comment cards? The, I just got this in my mailbox, and it's in relevance to what the last speaker, Ramona, I think it was, correct?
Right.
Was speaking about. Is this going to be on the environmental website or some?
We can post it, for sure.
Okay.
Absolutely. Would you like me to go into a little detail about it?
It might, yeah, it might help. I've read the first three pages, and if I correct, it's talking about the issue that she just brought up.
Right, that is correct. As, as Ms. Fujimono mentioned, the LA County Department of Public Health did issue four letters to local businesses to the four forging companies in Paramount. It was a directive order for them to work with AQMD on reducing their emissions. That was due to some monitors within their vicinity registering at high levels of hexavalent chromium. We had heard that concern, obviously, as, as staff and as the council heard that as well, but we were also kind of confused at that point, because we hadn't heard that these businesses were actual sources, had been identified as actual sources by AQMD on our weekly calls. So I contacted AQMD and asked, have they been identified? Because we have this letter that we saw from the county public health department that states that in fact, that they are emitting hexchrome. So the, the letter that you have with you and that you've asked to be put on the environmental website is from Mr. Wayne Nastri, who is the executive officer for the AQMD. And in the letter, he states that, what, what you have there, he states that they have not been identified as a health risk in that area. So there's the other opinion that we, we got. So anyway, in answer to your question, we will post those letters on the website, along with Mr. Nastri's letter as well, so.
Okay, and then we're no more speakers? Okay. We'll move on to new business or report on the sheriff's citizen status action.
Yes, Madam Mayor, council. This is an annual review of a survey program that we've had in place for quite some time. It's actually our 20-year anniversary of doing this. The city staff has been surveying residents and businesses who have called for public safety services, and this effort is just one way to ensure that our residents and businesses receive the very best possible service from the county sheriff's department and from our non-sworn city community service officers. The majority of respondents seem to be either satisfied or very satisfied, as Adriana Lopez, our interim public safety director, will now share with you. Adriana?
Thank you, John, and good evening, Madam Mayors and council member, council members. Today, I will be presenting the results of our own ongoing efforts to ensure we provide a high level of public safety services through our daily assurance calls. Like John mentioned, in 1997, we started, we started creating weekly reports that tracked concerns that the council wanted to be informed of. The reports were referred to as United Duty Reports. The weekly reports included a summary of lawn parking citation, vendor arrests, loud party calls, police follow-ups, and a summary of traffic citations. Some years ago, we stopped providing these reports because they were very lengthy, but we continue to collect this information. Today's presentation will focus on our continued efforts to ensure that we are providing a high level of service to those who call the station. Again, since 1997, public safety personnel has been conducting what we refer to as quality assurance calls on a daily basis. Staff selects four calls where the reporting party provided their contact information. Day shift staff Day shift staff calls two people, and PM staff calls two different people. Callers will be selected from the list of incidents that led to a report, and if we're not successful from that list, then we will call other callers that placed a call for service. The information is then entered into a database that we can extract the information whenever As you can see here, we ask for five questions, and for consistency purposes, the questions are asked in a scripted manner. The caller is asked to answer four questions that the responses are limited to very satisfied, satisfied, indifferent, or dissatisfied. The caller is asked to rate the service provided by dispatch, the response time, customer service level of the handling deputy or the community service officer, and also, the caller is asked to rate the overall service experience. The last question they're asked is whether they were provided a citizens' satisfaction survey form. The last question is just a no or yes answer. This is an actual copy of the satisfaction form that is given to a caller. The form is yet another way for us to conduct quality assurance. The card asks the reporting party to rate the officer's level of customer service and their demeanor. This particular form was returned from one of our CSOs who wrote a burglary report. For this evening's presentation, we are providing results of the quality assurance calls that were made from October 2016 to August 2017, which includes a total of 1,400 calls. The great majority of our callers who were queried were satisfied or very satisfied. The satisfied category is the highest, at almost 85%, and if you add the very satisfied and satisfied, it roughly totals 98%. Whenever we receive response from a caller who is dissatisfied, the incident is referred to the station lieutenant, who will review the response if it involved a deputy, or the public safety supervisor or myself if it involved a CSO. At this point, we will follow up with the officer or dispatch and attempt to correct the problem and also to continue improving in our services. This is a copy of a page of the in line of duty report, which we continue to utilize as a tool to track our calls. We can query again the database at any time to see how we're doing. As you can see here, we enter the date of the incident, the name of the reporting party, which has been blanked out for tonight's meeting, the type of call, and the actual results. It should be noted that not all incidents result in a report. This concludes my presentation, and I will be more than happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Adriana. Are there questions? Anyone? Thank you for the report, Adriana, and thank you for doing such a great job over there in public safety. We certainly appreciate it. You're welcome. Next, we have a receive and file on residential soil sampling.
Yes, Madam Mayor and Council. Before we go into this next report, I want to report on a couple of things regarding environmental issues. This was actually mentioned earlier. Power washing of roofs, at the last city council meeting, an issue of concern was raised about one of the forging companies that's located adjacent to the railroad tracks over here, power washing their roof. We've been in contact with both of those companies that are adjacent to the railroad tracks, Weber Metals and Press Forge. Both companies did say that they both recently power washed their roof as required by AQMD Rule 1430. We contacted AQMD to let them know about this concern and to verify that in fact, this is a requirement under Rule 1430. We got an email back from AQMD late Friday telling us that the roof cleaning is consistent with AQMD Rule 1430, and that the forging facilities are required to do this once every six months. So AQMD also said that they checked the air monitor results from that time period, and they found no increase in hexchrome levels at that time. AQMD also said that they would contact the forging companies to ask them to use a low pressure wet wall washing rather than high pressure. The companies also stated that they use proper procedures for capturing the wastewater so that it didn't go out in the street and into the gutter. One of the companies actually provided pictures to us that showed the wastewater going into a hose and into a pump truck. So we contacted our stormwater consultant to ask them about this, and our stormwater consultant said that the method that was used, that is the proper collection and disposal of the wastewater, does satisfy our stormwater permit requirement. Our environmental consultant further noted that clean roofs should definitely reduce the pollutant load that goes into the storm drain for the rainy season. So that was that item. The other item I'd like to report on, also dealing with environmental issues, during our weekly conference call with AQMD, we've heard that AQMD continues to field more complaints about odors coming from Carlton Forge. Last week, I contacted the general manager of Carlton Forge to find out just what it is that they're doing to address this issue. This isn't the first time I've contacted the general manager. I've had previous phone conversations with him to express our concern with the odor issue. In this latest call, I asked when they'd have some type of solution to this odor issue, as it seems like it's just not going, it's just not going away. So the general manager said that they're close to getting AQMD approval for an odor control measure that uses carbon filtering. So he told me that this measure will be used to impact, if not ultimately eliminate the odors completely. I asked when this would be implemented. He said that he couldn't comment on a timeline yet because, excuse me, they are under a strict abatement order with AQMD. They do have a status hearing for this next Tuesday, the 26th, at AQMD headquarters. The Carlton Forge general manager told me that after that time, he will be able to explain when this will be implemented. So they need AQMD approval to talk about the details, but he assured me that it would be very quickly after they get AQMD approval. They now have a way to install this odor control measure without disrupting the performance of the HEPA filters. The HEPA filters, once again, they told me, are designed to control the metallic emissions that are going on. I verified all this with AQMD this morning, and they did confirm that this measure was part of Carlton's order for abatement, that was issued by AQMD. And AQMD said that this would definitely be part of the status hearing, as I mentioned earlier, that's on next Tuesday, and that their approval for this permit would be expedited. So AQMD is going to work hard, they claim, to expedite approval of this permit. So we will continue to follow this closely and make sure that it does continue in the right direction, so. Now, on to the next agenda item. As you know, we partnered with DTSE to conduct soil and dust sampling at Village Park earlier this year, and we presented the results of that study at a recent council meeting, and the results were positive, in that hexchrome was not found at hazardous levels at Village Park. We now teamed up with LA County Department of Public Health to conduct soil sampling at 10 locations in the public right-of-way downwind from Anaplex and Aerocraft. We're happy to report that these results are very similar to Village Park results, and with us tonight is our consultant, Randy Westhouse, to go over the results. We also have with us in the audience, I believe she's here already, Katie Butler from County Public Health. Katie, are you in the audience? Yep, there she is. Okay, so she's also here to answer any questions as well. So with that, I'll turn it over to Randy to go over the presentation. Randy?
We have a clicker for the presentation. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. It's good to see everybody again since the last time I was here in August. Tonight, I'm going to talk about the, give a summary of the results of the soil sampling that was conducted in residential areas downwind of Anaplex and the Aerocraft heat treating. And this was performed by County of Los Angeles Department of Public Health, and we'll go through the results, how the sampling was conducted, and then answer, open it up for questions at the end. So a work plan was prepared. It was dated May 10th, and it was prepared by the Department of Public Health and to match previous assessments. And these assessments were done at Carlton Forge in 2014, and then also the work that we did at Village Park this past year as well. And it was basically the metals that were going to be sampled, what the detection limits were as well. So the PH partnered with both the city and also the fire department, health hazmat, to sample 10 locations downwind of the Anaplex and Aerocraft facility. So that would be to the east, the winds predominantly from the west to the east. So they were east, and we'll have a map that'll show those locations. Similar to what we did at Village Park, we collected split samples. So basically, we have two laboratories involved. The Department of Public Health used American Analytical Environmental Testing Laboratory. That was the same lab that Tetra Tech used for the Village Park. And then we had a second laboratory, Eurofin's Cal Science, and those samples were sent for Tetra Tech to be analyzed as well. So we analyzed for a total of 21 metals. The first one were the CAM17 metals that we did for Village Park, and then four additional, the chromium 6, manganese 10, and titanium, which are used in some of the metal facilities in the city. So again, 21 metals were tested in the soil. Here's a map that shows the sampling locations to the left side of the figure there, and this is right from the report. This is figure one in the report. Anaplex and also Aerocraft are to the left, and we've got locations where the soil samples were collected are numbered 1 through 10. So sample location 1 is about 300 feet east of Aerocraft, and if you go to sampling location 10, that's about a little over 1,000 feet to the east of the facility. So this shows the locations, it's right in the report, where the 10 samples were taken. And again, two samples were taken at each of those 10 locations for each of the laboratory. Okay, summary of the soil sampling. It was done on May 20th. The fieldwork was observed by the city and also Tetra Tech. Tetra Tech had a field geologist in the field overseeing the work that was being done. Health Hazmat collected the samples from 1-inch to 10 locations. They collected them from public right-of-way near the residence, and the samples were homogenized in the field. Basically, what that means is we just, they were mixed in the field so that we then could collect split samples, two samples, collected from each of the 10 locations. Vegetative matter, which is mainly grass, was removed from the surface sample, so in the sample containers, there was just soil in the containers. And then the sampling equipment was decontaminated prior to sampling in between each samples, and that typically just is water with soap. They clean the equipment that they use, and then dry it off, and then it's used before they collect the next sample. Okay, next I'm going to talk about the soil data that was actually collected. This is table one, which is right from the report, and I'll just walk you quickly through the table. The first column shows the 21 metals that were sampled for. The next two columns talks about the two screening levels that the sample results were compared to, and I'll talk about those in the next slide. We also show the, that shows the background levels that were collected during the Carlton Forge work in 2014, and a statistical analysis was done. And then we show minimum and maximum values, and also an average value. And then the next column shows the results from the soil samples, the 10 locations, and each sample location has a 1A and a 1B designation for the two laboratories. So what we did is, the laboratories were in pretty close comparison between their two sample results at each location, and what the county did is pick the maximum. So you've got the worst-case scenario, where they pick between the two samples from the location, pick the maximum sample. So there's two color codes here. I'll briefly walk you through the two colors, what those mean, and then explain it in the next slides. You've got, sample results are shown in blue. There's 10 metals there. Those sample locations were above the background levels that were calculated back in 2014, but they're below both of the screening levels, the EPA screening level and also the California health screening level as well. And then we have four metals that are shown there in yellow. We've got arsenic, cadmium, chromium 6, and the last one is lead. In those locations, the yellow results were either above one of these two screening levels, and we'll go through that in the next slide. But this is right from the report, this table one. Okay, next, I'll walk you through the results. As I previously showed you on the table, we compared, the metals were compared to the EPA regional screening levels, and those are actually regional, so they're not specific to California. They were also compared to California human health screening levels, which are specific to California, and then also background levels. Now, the four metals that I talked about that were coded in yellow, for arsenic, we had 10 samples, cadmium 2, chromium 6.1, and lead had two samples, were detected above their respective two screening levels that I previously talked about. Now, three of those four metals, arsenic, cadmium, and lead, were found to be within the background levels. Last time in August, we talked about arsenic. DTSE has a level of 12 milligrams per kilogram that's used for all school sites in California. That's what we used. All 10 samples were below that screening level that DTSE uses for school sites in Southern California. We had one soil sample of the 10 that were collected that had a detectable concentration at 0.4 milligrams per kilogram. That's right at the laboratory detection limit, and it exceeded the RSL by EPA, which is 0.3, but is well below the California human health screening level of 17 milligrams The other locations for chromium 6 were not an issue. They were below the screening levels and below the reporting limit of 0.4 milligrams per kilogram. And then the 10 metals that I talked about that were shaded in blue on table one, they're all listed there, were all concentrations above the local background level, above the local background levels but below the two screening levels. So no real issues with those 10 metals. Okay, the conclusions from the study, again, this is based upon the Department of Public Works report, so it's basically the conclusions that they reached from the, from the report, and also from the samples that were collected. We've talked about the one sample location, 1A and 1B, was above the regional screen level for EPA, but below the California screening level. And this location's about 300 feet east of the Aerocraft facility, so it's the closest sample that we collected, sample 1A and 1B. Now, these low detections of chromium 6 suggest that the majority of the air emissions from Anaplex and Aerocraft facilities have either not settled or not persisted on surface soils of nearby residential areas. And this, this conclusion is very similar to what we found at Village Park as well. We didn't find really any issues with the chromium 6 in the soil there as well. The one thing that may be going on is historical deposits, the chromium 6 may be converted to chromium 3, which, as we discussed last month at Village Park, the same thing, it's a non-toxic form of chromium, and it's basically just interaction with the organic matter in the soil. And basically, the chromium 6 is being reduced to chromium 3, which is a good thing, because the screening levels for chromium 3 are in the thousands, they're very high. Other conclusions were, the county felt that direct contact with or accidental ingestion of these surface soils in this area on this study do not appear to represent an exposure path of public health concern for chromium 6. And the second bullet there is basically, again, based upon this study only and the 10 samples that were collected, that inhaling chromium 6 poses the most significant threat to the public, and it's what's, the ongoing effort to reduce the health risk should continue to focus on reducing air emissions from facilities in the city emitting chromium 6. And then as the interagency investigation continues, additional soil sampling may be warranted to evaluate soil near other industrial sources of chromium 6 in the city, and that's found upon the monitoring that's being done by South Coast Air Quality Management District or other agencies that may be involved as well. So the full report's available on the city's website. The website is shown there, and it's also included in the board package tonight. So next, Tetra Tech would like to thank the city for the work that we've done in both the issues on the soil and the air quality over the last three or four minutes, or the last three or four months. And I just wanted to... And I just wanted to show that we're very proud of our rankings by the Engineering News Record. This is based on revenues in 2017. We've been rated number one in water for the last 13 years, and under the environment, environmental management, environmental sciences and consulting services, we've been ranked number one as well. So with that, I'd like to open it up for questions, and we've also got Katie Butler from County Public Health here as well to answer any questions. If you have any questions.
Can we bring the lights back up? Thank you for the report. Questions? We'll start. Diane?
No. She speaks for herself.
Pretty self-explanatory. Sound good.
No questions, thank you for the report. Thanks for coming up, Katie.
Subject matter on the Carlton Forge issue. I, I took note that you said they're under a strict order of abatement, and they were working on all those things with the AQMD, so that's good news. You also mentioned that the water washing you looked into and possibly Weber Press Forge, and that seemed all fine. What about Carlton Forge? I know last week you guys also looked into the fact that they were doing some work there, as was mentioned by Ramona, about a roof being taken off of us and plumbing done in violation of not having permits for that. Did they end up coming in to get the permits?
Not sure if you, oh, Mr. Chen would have the answer for that.
Yeah, I can answer that briefly. So it was brought to our attention that there was work being done at the Carlton Forge facility, as well as some plumbing work outside of their facility. With regard to the, the roof, they, they had to repair one of their large pieces of machinery, and the only way to extract the machine for repair was to take it out of the roof. So because that was the case, it, it did not require a permit for, for that work. It was, it was repair of their machinery. The only possible permit that might have been necessary was for the roof, but typically we would require a permit for roof repair. But in this case, the, the roof wasn't being repaired. It was taken off, and then it was going to be put back on. So a permit wasn't required for that. In terms of the plumbing work that, that was happening off-site, it was a leak, I believe. I, I don't know the technicalities, but there was some type of a leak with their plumbing, and it was emergency work that they had to do to, to fix it. And for emergency work, we don't require a permit immediately. However, after the fact, we do ask that they come in to, to pull a permit. And so our inspector was able to go out and talk with the workers out there in the field, informed them that, you know, a permit would be necessary after the fact, and then the very next day, they did come in and pull the permit needed.
Okay, thank you. All right, we're going to move on to Item 3, the rules of decorum. Is there a staff report?
Do we need a motion to receive and file this soil sampling?
Okay.
I'll salute.
Move by Hanson.
Second.
Seconded by Martinez. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Hanson.
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffmeyer.
Yes.
Councilmember Gyan.
Yes.
Mayor Lemmons.
Yes. Item 3, do we have a staff report?
Yes, we do, Madam Mayor and Council. This next item is a request to adopt a policy establishing rules of decorum procedures for the conduct of city council meetings. At the last city council meeting, as you recall, the city council directed our city attorney to draft rules of decorum and procedures. So before I turn it over to our city attorney, John Kavanaugh, just a reminder, we do have two speakers' cards from members of the audience wishing to speak on this item. With that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Kavanaugh.
Thank you, John. Mayor Lemmons and members of the city council.
As John indicated, that this item for consideration tonight is a request to adopt a policy establishing rules of decorum procedures for the conduct of city council meetings. These proposed rules of decorum procedures are also intended to apply to any other city boards and commissions that are subject to the Brown Act and shall apply to the city council chambers or any other location where a meeting subject to these rules take place. So they'll follow you wherever there is a public meeting, so that they can apply it evenly. At the, at the September 5, 2017 city council meeting, the city council directed our office to present a comprehensive policy establishing rules of decorum and procedures for the conduct of city council meetings. The, the rules of decorum and procedures is a fancy way of a lot of other cities calling it just code of conduct. They're both pretty much similar. They incorporate the same type of provisions, but one may be called Code of Conduct, the other's Rules of Decorum. What they basically are, are, there's a document that is really intended to be a fluid document, and it's designed to meet the needs of changed circumstances, interactions among city council members, city staff, and members of the public. We have to look back at what the purpose of a city council meeting is, and for purposes of, of what I'm presenting tonight, I'm going to use the city council, although it also applies to any boards and commissions that are subject to the Brown Act. So, but for purposes of brevity, I'll just apply to the city council. The purpose of the policy is to establish consistent rules of decorum and procedures that are applicable to city officials, city staff, and members of the public at all meetings of the city council, to ensure that the business of the city is intended to thoroughly and efficiently with opportunities for orderly public participation. These rules of decorum are intended to promote open meetings that welcome debate of public policy issues being discussed by the family, by the, by the city council, their committees and city boards and commissions, but in an atmosphere of fairness, courtesy, and respect for different points of view. City council meetings are considered under the law to be a limited public forum, which basically means that the city is authorized to define the scope and extent of not only communications among city council members, but also between members of the public and the city council and city staff. So in essence, this, if you look at it, it's almost a, a circle of discussion that occurs among council members, between public and council members, between staff and the public, between staff and public members. So it's a very, very integrated rules of procedure that's designed to implement fairness and consistency among all the groups here. The, the proposed policy establishing the rules of decorum procedures will enable the city council, city staff, and members of the public to adhere to a consistent, fair, and equitable process, which will allow the business of the city to be accomplished efficiently. Before I go on, I want to kind of give an example of basically what, what roles the city council has, and the planning commission does to a lesser extent, but if you recall, the city council is tasked with, with a number of particular functions, and it all depends on what the agenda item is, that you have to switch hats. And I'll give some analogies to it, just to give you an idea of what you're doing. Number one, you have, you're, you have the task of being a legislative body. So in other words, you are going to consider and adopt legislative policy ordinances, resolutions that are basically the law of the city. So in a lot of ways, you're no different from, like, the state legislature that's adopting statutes. In this case, you're adopting ordinances and resolutions. So you have that task, and that occurs at a city council meeting. The next role that you have is that you're also, you're performing the, the service of a quasi-judicial body. What that means is that you're five judges, in essence, and that's where there are applications in which you're making discretionary decisions on, almost like in a court of law, where an application comes before, before you. You open up public hearings, you consider evidence presented to you, and then you make a decision on how that application is going to be accepted, very much like what a judge does in a court of law, except there's five of you versus just one. So you have that task. And finally, you also have the task of allowing members of the public the opportunity to present issues to you. Now, when you look at all three of those, that's, that's a very, very difficult task, number of tasks to, to juggle in a single council meeting. Okay? Because you never know at one particular point, you have to change hats. And I'll give you an example. You go into court, people are allowed to go into court and listen to a trial, but there are rules with respect to how that trial, how that court is being held. You can go up to Sacramento and listen to hearings on particular legislative bills. There are rules that they adopt and how you, how they interact with one another. So you can see that depending on the particular role, the rules may apply differently. So the purpose of these is to fully evaluate and analyze all those rules and then establish these rules to be consistent. So it enables all of you to have a very good idea of how to present and, and deal and communicate with each other, with members of the public, and with members of the staff as well. Now going into the actual rules themselves, they're, they're really divided into the following main categories. So even though they may seem somewhat complicated, they're broken down into eight categories that I created. The first one is communications among city council members. That basically is how you communicate with one another up, up in the dais. The second is communication with members of the public who are addressing the city council. We have specific rules for that. There are rules for city staff. We, as a staff, have to adhere to a certain number of rules and regulations so that you can have an expectation on how we're going to deal with both you and members of the public. Rules for members of the public, specific rules for how members of the public address the city council, how they address staff. We have enforcement of rules. Rules are only as good as they can be enforced, so you have to have an enforcement policy to make sure that the rules are not only enforced, but they are enforced evenly and consistently and without, not arbitrarily. Voting on matters on city council agenda, these you have a pretty good idea with already in how you vote on matters. This kind of just basically sets out more of a summary and how to do it, but it gives you some guidance on it. Placement of items on city council meeting agenda, this basically is an important part in how items are going to be presented on agendas that are ultimately going to be presented to you for consideration. We have to have some rules on how that's done so that it doesn't come from a whole bunch of directions. And it also makes it easier for staff to make sure that it's an orderly procedure on how items are going to be put on the agenda. And then finally, you have public hearings, how public hearings are held. You have a pretty good idea of public hearings, but again, this is more of a, a, a rule of reminder and how public hearings are to be discussed, how they're to be implemented, and ultimately decided on. Each of these categories, as I said, within the proposed policy, has specific rules and procedures which will enable the business of the city is intended to thoroughly and efficiently with opportunities for orderly public participation. If you notice, I've said this a number of times about the orderly and efficient business of the city. That really is your primary purpose in city council meetings. Your, your task is to, and depending on what that role is, is to ensure that the business of the city is being carried out in an orderly fashion. That's why it has to be structured, or you can be here all day long and all night long talking about the tasks that you have to do with respect to the business. So there has to be some structure and organization to make sure that you go, you get through your agenda, you consider each item, and then you go on to the next one. Again, they not only apply to the city council but to the other boards and commissions. They're also going to be conducted in the locations, like, for instance, if we have a situation where the council, like, goes off on the bus and goes to various locations, these rules are going to apply and follow you as well. Again, it's consistency. Based on that, what I've done is I presented and drafted this proposed rules of decorum, but if the council would indulge me, there are a number, there are some changes I would like to propose, I would like to recommend, some changes in these. These proposed changes are not policy changes, they are changes which I feel are legal in nature. So I'm only presenting this and recommending this because I see that maybe there could be some legal issues involved. There could be clarifications legally that I'd like to present it to you. So I'm going to go through those one by one so that if you, and make a recommendation, if you will accept those, then at least from my perspective, from a legal perspective, then I can at least present that to you. Any other policy issues that you have, it can be discussed among yourselves before you finalize the document.
John, may I make a suggestion?
Yes.
If there's a few of these, a number of these, as you said, could you take them one by one and then just ask for a consensus if it's okay to change so that we...
That is a very good idea, Madam Mayor. I'll do that. And I'll, I'll go through each page and the section so you can follow me along.
Perfect.
Okay. So we'll start with Page 2. And Page 2 is, see, Page 1 starts with C, Subparagraph 3. I would like to change the second sentence where it says, "Council members shall avoid repetition and, and shall limit their comments to the subject matter at hand." I'd like to change "shall avoid repetition" to "should avoid repetition." I think that is a better way of, of doing it. I keep "shall limit your comments to the subject matter" because that does keep you on track on the subject matter jurisdiction that you're dealing with. But I think that "should avoid repetition," when you put "shall" in, it basically makes it mandatory and it doesn't give you any room. I can't put you in a situation where you're always going to be able to do that, so it should, I think, is a better way of, of expressing that rather than mandatory. If that is okay with the council, I'd like to get a consensus if there's any problem.
How about if, if there's any problem, just go ahead and state that you have an issue. If not, we'll consider it a consensus. Does that work for everybody?
It works.
So for you?
That's fine. Okay, thank you. The next one is, is number 5. And I'm ranking a recommendation for number 5 because technology has, has proceeded to a point now where you all may, may be dependent on devices or information, and I think we need to kind of clarify what we're trying to achieve here and not actually take something away from you that actually may, may be beneficial for you to provide an informed decision. And so what I've done here, this is use of cellular phones for texting, calling internet or social media browsing by council members prohibited during city council meetings. What I'd like to do is change it to use of cellular phones for texting, calling or receiving calls, or social media browsing by council members is prohibited during city council meetings, provided, however, that the use of cellular phones or tablets for purposes of gathering information to make a decision on a particular agenda item is authorized. Then, should the need arise for a council member to use a cellular phone where there's a call, they shall leave the dais to do so. So what I'm doing here, if the council will permit me, is to make an exception that allows you to use electronic devices for purposes of, of agenda items to get information, but still keep the intent of not allowing devices to be used for things that may distract you, that, that keep you focused on the agenda. If the council's okay with that recommendation...
Can you read the recommended language? Do you have it there?
Yeah.
Or do you need to come up with it?
No, no, let me put it in. Let me read it right now. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Use of cellular phones for texting, calling or receiving calls, or social media browsing by council members is prohibited during city council meetings. Semicolon, provided, however, city council use of cellular phones or electronic tablets is permissible when the purpose is to provide information to the council member for agenda items. Period. Then, should the need arise for a council member to use a cellular phone, that council member should leave the dais.
Okay, any objections?
No objection, but I think we had said if you needed to read your speech or read notes off your Word document on your phone, if it's being used as a laptop, to have your notes, that that is also...
Yeah, and that, I think that's encompassed with that. We could put that in for use of notes and... We could put that in for use of notes and reading those too, because you're going to be using those to read notes from. So that's part of that, and we can put that on there, add that in too. But that's kind of what we're trying to achieve, Madam Mayor and the council, to do that. If, if that's okay with you, I'd like to get a consensus.
No objection. No objection.
Okay, thank you. The next one is Section D, "Communication with members of the public addressing the council." Number two. It says, "Council members should not engage the person addressing the city council in a dialogue, but shall confine communication to a brief question and answer format conducted through the presiding officer." The, the term "dialogue" is a bit ambiguous and probably overextensive because we don't really know what a dialogue is, and there might be a question and answer that you may have, and dialogue may fit into that, and we don't want to put you in a box. So rather than using the term "dialogue," if I substituted the term "debate," so it would be, "Council members should not engage the person addressing the council in a debate, but shall, shall confine communication to a brief question and answer format conducted through the presiding officer." If that's acceptable to the council, I'd like to get a consensus.
Any objections?
No objection, but if you look at your discussion, sir, on the very first page that you read, if that becomes part of the code of conduct, in the second paragraph under discussion, it says, "These rules of decorum are intended to promote open meetings that welcome, that welcome debate."
Yes.
And then if you, then if you have that, no debate, then they contradict each other.
You're right.
So on the mission statement under the discussion, we should change, we, change it to "we welcome dialogue" instead of "debate" on that part?
Yes, that's fine.
They contradict each other.
That's fine. Again, to be consistent.
Right.
Okay, back up and make that clear for everybody, John?
On, on D2, we're deleting the term, the word "dialogue"
Right.
And inserting the word "debate."
Right.
And then, let's see. Councilmember Gillian, what section was that again that you pointed out?
In your discussion on the very first cover page, if the background, under your request, background discussion, second paragraph-
Oh, yes, yes, on in my staff report, yes.
Yes. If that becomes part of the code of conduct, if it doesn't, then it's not an issue.
It doesn't really, it's more the staff report. I think the, the actual rules-
Stands alone, that's fine.
Yes. Thank you though for bringing that, my attention.
Okay, so I, I didn't see any objection to that, and the question's been answered, so you have a consensus if that's okay.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The next one is on page four. F1, there is a, F1A, I'm sorry. It says, "Members of the audience shall not engage in disorderly or boisterous conduct, including the utterance of obscene, lewd, loud, threatening, repeatedly irrelevant or repetition, or abusive language." The paragraph, what I'd like to do is delete the clause "repeatedly irrelevant or repetition" as that would be overextensive and ambiguous, but I would keep everything else.
No objection from me?
No objection.
Okay. F1C, we have placards, signs, and posters. "Posters may not be brought into the city council chambers as such objects can." That is also somewhat ambiguous because it leaves it up to the council to determine what is. I, I would just say that, I would like to insert this language, "Placards, signs, and posters may not be brought into the city council chambers that would disturb, disrupt, impede, or otherwise render the orderly conduct of the city council meeting, feasible or block the view of any other person in attendance." So I'm creating a causal effect rather than just a, a possibility.
So would something like this then be determined at the door, or if it's displayed during the meeting and then causes a disruption?
It would occur at the meeting by the presiding officer.
Okay. I don't have an objection, anybody else?
No.
No.
Okay. On D, somewhat similar, legal correction I'd like to make, it says, "packages, bundles, suitcases, large or potentially dangerous objects should not be brought into the city council chambers as such objects may pose a threat or as otherwise render the orderly conduct of the meeting." Where it says "as" and "may," that's a bit ambiguous, and it puts frankly too much of a burden on the city council to determine that. So I would change the language to read as, "packages, bundles, suitcases, large or potentially dangerous objects shall not be brought into the city council chambers if such objects pose a threat or as otherwise render the orderly conduct of the city council meeting." This then basically allows our, our law enforcement to make that determination rather than the city council.
Okay.
Yes.
Any objections?
No.
Okay. Page five. We have, you know, F1, then we have F2 on page five and F3. F3A, it says, "Public oral communications at the city council meetings should not be a substitute for any item that can be handled during the normal working hours of the city government." That's important because if members of the public can try to work something out or contact the city department head or through the city manager and get their issue resolved, we encourage that. However, the second sentence says, "The primary purpose of oral communications is to allow citizens the opportunity to formally communicate with the city council as a whole for matters that cannot be handled during the regular working hours." It's somewhat contradictory, Madam Mayor and council, by saying that because we're saying that, yeah, it shouldn't be a substitute, but then we're saying you really shouldn't do it at all. We don't want to necessarily prohibit members of the community to, to address the council on something that ultimately is going to be handled by a department head or through the city manager, but allow them the opportunity to raise it to you or bring it to your attention. At that time, the, the presiding officer, in this case the mayor, can sit there and direct, particular, can direct the city manager through the department head to address that issue at another time. I'm just trying to make it consistent, I think it's contradictory.
Are you talking about removing the entire item then?
No, the, the second sentence entirely.
The primary purpose?
Yeah. It's, it's saying, look, it's not a substitute, but at the same time, we're not going to prevent you from presenting that, because you do that already now.
Mm-hmm. Any objections?
No.
Okay, consensus to move forward.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The next one is, is 3E. Says, "Each person who addresses the council shall do so in an orderly manner shall make, shall make personal attacks, impertinent, slanderous, or profane marks." The term "impertinent" is ambiguous, and I think that creates a, a problem on the council to determine what's impertinent. I think that's a, that's a general term, and I would recommend we, we delete that.
Is that it for that section?
Yes, that's it for that section, just that word.
No objection from me, anybody?
No objection.
Okay. "Persons addressing the city council shall address the council as a whole and should not engage in either a dialogue or question." I'd like to substitute the term "or dialogue" with "debate" for the same reasons that we discussed above.
Is that it for that section?
That's it for that one.
Consensus?
Yeah.
Mr. Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Not even a question, but just for some clarification. So we're accepting your changes, and if we don't have an issue with your change, we're doing a consensus, but does this limit, am I supposed to be bringing up the, my issues with individual paragraphs at this time, or are we just simply going over your issues right now?
We're just going over mine, Councilmember Gillian, because mine are primarily what I believe to be a legal issue, and I want to get those to you and make my recommendation. If any of you have some changes policy-wise, I would ask that you do that after I'm done.
Great.
And page seven, under G, little G, we have the public, the, the three-minute rule. At the last sentence, it says, "This rule shall not apply to the proponents of applications at public hearings." That was an error on my part, I should have included both proponents and opponents of applications at public hearings. So I would recommend that we insert the term, the word "and opponents," so that it's fair to both sides.
Any objections?
No.
Consensus to move?
And the next subsection is I. Let's see, there is the second sentence which says, "No member of the public may cede his or her time to speak to another." I would recommend that we delete that sentence for the following reason. Typically speaking, without a comprehensive rules of decorum, you do have a problem where someone may cede to someone else over a period of time, and depending what that person may be saying, there may not be any rules on how that communication is being done. So by having these rules, that does address the primary speaker that's addressing the council. So because we have the rules, I don't see a necessity that someone shouldn't be able to cede their time, because the person whose time is being ceded to is still going to be subject to the same rules under these rules of decorum. And, and just because maybe someone wants to have somebody else speak for them, I don't think it should be prohibited.
I just have a question on that. When I was, you know, looking at these and researching them and the reasons for each one, the purpose was so that you didn't have a single speaker for like fifteen minutes, which several speakers say, "I'm going to give my time to, I'm going to give my time to, I'm going to give my time to." And then that became an issue of monopolizing the time with one speaker. So does that, is there something here that's going to protect against that?
Well, I mean, and that's a good point, Madam Mayor, about, you know, if you have, if you have a little number of people ceding their time, just keep in mind that we still have this maximum thirty-minute period, okay? So if, if you're going to have a lot of people ceding their time, you may only have one speaker during that whole time, and that's the way it goes. So, but that may be something that the, that a member wants to be able to do when they have one speaker. It's almost like, it's no different than if one, someone comes up and say, "I'm speaking on behalf of four people here," for a group. It's, it's to economize. Now that person may be speaking on behalf of a group, but they're agreeing to that, and as, as long as that speaker is adhering to these rules, there shouldn't really be any reason to say, "We're, we're not going to allow you to cede that time," because you're still going to have to comply with the thirty-minute rule entirely and also the way the person communicates with the council. It's not going to be a, a blank check to say whatever they want, it's going to be within this context.
Okay, I still have an issue and questions with that, but so that we can go in order of, you know, what council member Gillian said.
Absolutely, and if there's something here that you feel that, well, I think this is more of a policy question, I'd be more than happy to say, you know, let's, let's all of you talk about it, and then we'll, then we can decide.
Yeah, so I would dissent on approving this one until there's further discussion on it.
Okay. Aye. Then we'll just hold that off?
Yeah.
Okay. And the only other one is on the last page, page thirteen, where it says, "Interpretation and applicability." Says, "The rules of decorum procedures set forth herein shall be liberally construed to effectuate their purpose." Then there's the clause, "And no ordinance, resolution proceeding, or other action of the city council shall be invalidated, nor the legality thereof otherwise affected by the failure or omission of the city council to technically comply with, observe, or otherwise follow such rules." The clause that, the wording that occurs, "effectuate their purpose," and at the end of the sentence, I would recommend that we delete that clause entirely for the simple reason that when you look at it in a strict sense, it does put the responsibility on the city council to, to comply with these rules, and what we don't want to do is to have the council become legally liable for failure to do so. I, I think this is an eternal policy that you all follow, and also, we don't want to have any type of ordinance resolution that says, you know, "If you don't follow this, something's going to happen." I, I'd rather not do that, I think legally it's, it's overreaching, and I would just recommend that just that clause be, be removed. So it would be, "The rules of decorum procedures set forth herein shall be liberally construed to effectuate their purpose," period, and then go on with the rules of decorum and procedures shall apply to any other city boards.
Are there any objections?
No.
That concludes my, my presentation, Madam Mayor and council, and my recommended changes.
Okay, so now we're going to move into discussion on the items, and so Diane, is there anything that you, I'm sorry, Councilmember Martinez, is there anything you want to bring up?
No, I don't.
Mr. Hoffmeier?
No, I have nothing.
Okay, Councilmember Hanson, something that needs further discussion?
No, I don't think so.
Councilmember Gillon?
Yes, I do. I think most of these issues were resolved, there were a couple that we, I needed to put before you, and I'm just going through my notes. Page four. If you look at F and go all the way down to G, which actually takes it to the next page, page five, "Public video recording during a city council recess. At any time which the presiding officer has ordered a recess during the city council meeting, the presiding officer shall also order the public recording," and I believe we're referring to the public recording in the back of the room, "be discontinued," which I'm perfectly fine with. I just want to differentiate between if a person in the audience is recording on their own time and there's no expectation of privacy in this room, that they are able to continue video recording, something that they want during the recess. So I just wanted to differentiate between the two. If it means, "Shall also order the public recording discontinued," I'm fine with that, as long as we are not directing people of the audience in a public forum when there's no expectation of privacy, just like when there's presidential, something on the news going on and somebody forgets to turn off their mic and they say something really dumb, we have to be aware of what we're saying because the public has a right to continue to record. So as long as it's, and I keep saying this, as long as it's the public recording is being discontinued by the person recording in the back of the room.
Okay, to me, that's the item states, "Public video recording," so that's how I took it, so I think everybody's in agreeance or correct with Councilmember Gillian that it would not mean private citizen.
Okay, perfect. Then that's not an issue. If you continue on page five and you look at the last parenthetical B, and it has, "Speaker requests submitted after the calling for public comments," period, "on the agenda will not be considered. A person who speaks on an item during public comments may not take the same comment again at the item as heard. All speaking shall do so in the form of the podium." My only issue on that one, which continues on page six, but says, "Public comments," period, "on the agenda will not be considered." So if it was explained correctly that if you get to a city council meeting which starts at five, because most people get off of work at 5:30, 6:00, 6:30, and you want to say something during public comment time, but they've already collected the cards, you're not going to be able to speak. And I, I have an issue with that. I think you, if you haven't missed the time period for turning in your card, you should still be allowed to speak.
Okay, I'm confused. So can, can we take a second read and then go with-
Yeah, and, and that was something that John and I discussed, and he didn't agree with me on that one, but I said, "I think that it needs to be voted on."
Do you want to, Venus, you had a discussion with Councilmember Gillon about this, you want to just kind of give us?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Gillian basically felt that having speaker cards submitted-
"Prohibited at the time of public comment." This is a policy question. I, I think the council can certainly require that because it does keep members of the public to commit, continue submitting requests, speak during the course of the public comment, so you can have something that originally is two or three and ends up being ten or twenty. My, my feeling is it's a policy decision, you have enough time for, for members of the public to be able to fill out the card.
You have enough time for members of the public to be able to fill out the card, because you have the way the order of the agenda is, you have the roll call, there's, it doesn't go into public comment right away, and I think members of the public certainly have enough time to fill out a public comment card if they want to speak about something, and then it's given to the city manager, and that's what you have to work with. Now, with that said, let's say that before public comment, the city manager receives 20 requests to speak. We're still under the 30-minute rule, but because those comment cards were submitted before public comment, and you reach that 30 minutes, those people will have the opportunity to speak at the close of the agenda, so they're not going to be precluded from speaking. All we're presenting to you from a policy is that there be a cutoff time to present those cards.
And the time that we're recommending, if I read it correctly, is not when the meeting starts. We will go through a few ministerial items, and so they'll have up until the time that public comments begin.
That's correct, Madam Mayor.
Okay, I'm personally okay with the way it's written. Councilmember Gillian is not, is that correct?
Right, and I'm not saying that it can go on through the whole meeting. I'm just saying if public comments are still, if we're still in that block of public comments, and somebody's rushing to get here, stuck in traffic, it's a 5:00 meeting, chances are they're running late, if during public comments, they make it, they fill out a card, they turn it in, they may not get to speak at the beginning, because there's too many people already speaking for that 30 minutes, but they should be allowed to, if there's time, speak at the end. Simply because they didn't make it, right when public comments start, you're out. We need to be a little more flexible.
That's what you stated, John, right?
What's that?
That's what you stated, that once the 30 minutes is over, then we can take additional comments at the end.
That's not how it reads, though.
But the comment cards have to be submitted.
Now, you have to have your comment cards in by the start of public comment.
Right, you have to have them submitted to the city manager. At the time the mayor says, "Okay, now we're ready for public comment," those should be submitted already. What we're trying to, what we're trying to prevent are people that are already here, and all of a sudden they say, "You know what? I want to talk about something that somebody else said. I want to piggyback on it." Then they submit a card. You can go on forever like that, and then what happens is that it creates more and more, it basically inhibits the council to continue with their meeting, because you're having all these public comments. It's better to have all the public comment cards available, and then you deal with the public comment portion. If it goes beyond 30 minutes and they submitted it on time, you'll afford them the opportunity. It's just basically a structure and organizational requirement.
And I know when I met with you to discuss these, it was one of the things, actually, that we pushed to give more leeway on, because all of the cities that I had downloaded conducts of, for the meetings or rules of decorum, they all cut them off when the meeting was called to order.
That's correct.
And I said, "I don't see any harm in pushing that out so that we allow more time." So I think we're already adding additional flexibility, and I will just say again, I'm happy with it as written, but we'll have a roll call vote on this one. First, Diane has more comments.
Okay, I understand that Councilmember Gillon is stating that we should give the opportunity for our constituents to come before us and address us, but I do like the way it's written, the first 30 minutes, public comments, and leave it as is. But in the future, if we have additional comments from the audience, can this, this can be revised?
Yes.
Yes.
So why don't we fluid document? At any point that we find things aren't working, then we can bring it back.
You can go back, right? Yeah, I do want to underscore...
You should just leave it as is, and if we feel we need to revise it, then let's move forward with that.
That's fine, but if we're going to go ahead and leave that the way it is, I think I would like to revisit a city council meeting starting at 5:00, since we're going to take only public comments, and they're going to be cut off once public comments start. We're going to cut them off at a time. I kind of feel, well, not kind of, I do feel that 5:00, starting at 5:00, I don't know if that's because our bedtime is at 8:00 or 9:00 or what it is, but I think that's a little too early. So if we're going to accept it the way it is, then at some point, I'd like to revisit city council meetings starting at 5:00.
And that's always something you can request to be put on, and it's an agenda item, and if you get the support, it can certainly be done. So do you want, let's go ahead just for clarity and take a roll call vote on this one, Lana? And so I need a motion to leave it as is in a second, or change it?
I make a motion to re-read it as is.
Second.
Okay, moved by Hoffmeyer, seconded by Martinez, and let's have a roll call vote for clarity.
Councilmember Hanson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffmeyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Gillian?
No.
Vice Mayor Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor Lemmons?
Yes. Okay, go on, Councilmember Gillian, other items.
Okay. Page 11, last paragraph, placement of items on city council meeting agenda, and that was just mentioned by Mayor Lemmons, so this is a good opportunity to bring it up as well. It says, "All agenda items for consideration by the city council shall be set by the city manager." I would like it to include and the mayor. I don't think it should be limited to just the city manager. I think it should include the mayor. And/or two votes by any two council members should be able to put something on the agenda. I don't think it should be limited to just the city manager. I think if you get the majority, you want to put it on, a person wants to put it on the agenda, and they get two more votes from council members, that gives three votes. It could be put on the agenda. Or if the mayor wants to put something on the agenda, that person should have the ability to do so. And then also, if the city manager wants to put something on the agenda, they should have the ability to do so. So I'm asking to expand who can put something or request something to be put on the agenda, and that simply be the mayor, and/or two additional votes from any two council members should be able to have something on the agenda.
So for clarity here, John, it says on the one line, "Council members request or require approval by the majority of council." So this is already reading that if you have a majority of council members, you can have something put on the agenda, correct?
Right, and this applies still when you have your council member comments, and if a council member wants to put something on the agenda in the future, it requires a majority of the council to allow that.
And because I just am comfortable being as, you know, in this body, the mayor's only position is to chair the meetings. We don't have any more voting authority than anybody else does. I would like to leave it at the city manager so that the mayor doesn't have discretion unless they can get the support of the other council members.
And that's the intent, Madam Mayor, is keep in mind that the city of Paramount is governed by a council-manager form of government, and that basically means that the city council are policymakers, and the city manager is the CEO of operations. So it's not necessarily so different, because the city manager typically is going to be charged with that, but, you know, there are going to be times where, when you have public comment, and there may be something that's, a member of the public has said something, and so when the council members have comments, they may say, you know, "We'd like to maybe put that on a future agenda," and if you have two other council members agreeing to it, it's okay.
Can we, all the recesses?
Can we recess?